Good evening, if you will bear your head for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, August the 12th, 2010. I have a number of items of business tonight, so first thing that we want to look at is our consent agenda, and it's quite an extensive consent agenda. It's been several weeks since we have met, so there may be some questions regarding items on the consent agenda. If there are, now would be a good time to ask about those, and if not, I'll accept a motion that we will accept our consent agenda as it has been presented. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. You have a motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have before you the minutes of a special meeting held on July the 12th and a special meeting held on July the 15th. If you've had an opportunity to review those minutes, are there any additions or deletions, corrections to those minutes as they have been presented?
I move we approve the minutes as presented. Second.
All right, you have a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area along Greenland Drive and North University Street, Area 4, to General Office Residential OGR District.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
Let's move for its passage. Seven.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. On this next issue, we have on second reading an ordinance to zone an area, bulk zoning highway commercial. And the last time we voted on this on first reading, I voted no for this bulk zoning. And since that time, I have been made to understand, I think, from our financial community and others, that we have a very difficult borrowing and lending environment, and in order for some people to move forward on commercial pieces of property, it's very difficult if they're zoned residential or if they're zoned some way, that a lending institution cannot find out whether that property is commercial or not, and whether a government body would allow commercial usage. So taken in that light, I think that I will change my vote on this particular issue and also be a little bit more sensitive to the bulk zoning that we have until I find that we need to go back to the PCDs and PRDs that we have had in previous times. And so when we do vote on this, I would like to alert the council that I will change my vote to yes, and it will not make any difference because on the first vote, all the other council members voted yes and I voted no. So at this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to zone an area located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway as highway commercial, CH District.
Move for its passage.
Second. All right, motion in second.
Mayor, I would like to mention, along with what comments you had made, that we had made those at the last meeting, that I think Planning Commission and staff, we have increased and raised the bar on the requirements. So it's not like it used to be. We've made a little bit more stringent on the standards, so.
Well, and it's just, it is just, first of all, somebody's not going to bring something to our council that hasn't been recommended by our staff. So if they do, it's probably not going to be accepted, so.
I think, I think one of the, one of the things that was brought up earlier was the, I think the Publix on 99 was, Mr. Adelot, was a, just a bulk zoning lot, if my memory serves me correctly. And I think that's, that's a building, if you've ridden by it, looked at it, it's something that's, I think the community can be proud of, and that development was just on a bulk blanket zoning, if you will.
Right. All right, you have a motion in second. Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission regarding scheduling a public hearing to considering zoning ordinance amendments with regards to specialty restaurants, i.e. tea rooms, coffee houses, et cetera, and changeable copy signs, and rename a segment of Manson Pike to the Bill Smith Drive. Good evening, Ms. Adelot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During this regular meeting on August 4th of 2010, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matters, and they need to be scheduled for public hearings. And the first is a zone ordinance amendment concerning specialty restaurants, tea rooms, coffee houses, et cetera. And that came out of our study for the CM zones around the hospital that we've undertaken this summer. And the second is some zone ordinance amendments concerning changeable copy signs, and that has to do with the signings that the council placed a moratorium on earlier this year, and that is to move that forward so that can be removed. These just need to be scheduled for public hearings.
All right, Ms. McGannon.
Mayor, I would suggest September 23rd.
All right, September 23rd, council members. Is that date agreeable with you?
No objections within anyone's counters. Mayor, I move we set public hearings for September 23rd.
All right, September 23rd for a public hearing. Is there a motion? You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion in second for a hearing on September 23rd. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Also during the August 4th meeting, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider renaming a portion of Manson Pike that will be detached from the remainder of the street as a result of the realignment of Fortress Boulevard, Gresham Lane, and Manson Pike that are currently under construction. The Planning Commission voted to rename the street segment to Bill Smith Drive in honor of Mr. Bill Smith, who resides along this street and whose family has lived in the area for many years. I may add, actually, for several generations. The city council has requested to vote in concurrence on this matter, and no public hearing is required. I did include an illustration, and I think you may have had a study that Mr. Blomley prepared. He did a very good job on his study, and I think it was very helpful for the Planning Commission to help sort out this renaming and some other actions it took for names and addresses for the new roadway alignment.
All right, any questions of Mr. Adelot regarding this recommendation to change the name of this section of Manson Pike that will, to Bill Smith Drive? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
You have a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
And one more item on that. This should take effect when the construction is complete, and we'll establish a date to properly notify the emergency agencies and the other people whose addresses will be affected, and it will take effect as the street is opened up for traffic.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll consider recommendations of the Transportation Director regarding bids for construction of the Stones River Greenway Extension Phase III and CCTV and Traffic Signal Interconnect Project. Mr. Richardson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of council. I do have the two items for your consideration. On the first item, the city received bids on June the 29th for the construction associated with the Stones River Greenway Phase III. We did receive seven bids on this project, and the low bid was submitted by Kearl Construction in the amount of $512,0931.28. And based on the recommendation of the project design firm, Los Angeles Associates, and concurrence of the Department of Transportation after their review, we'd recommend award of the low bid to Kearl Construction. An approval contract between the city and Kearl, subject to approval, legal department substantially is shown as a contract in your package. And I should also point out that the construction is being 80% federally funded, and the city of Murfreesboro would be picking up the 10%, which was approximately $103,000. And this would be paid through TML. Happy answering questions.
Any questions? Mr. Young?
Mr. Richardson, when's the completion date on this project? How many days?
The Phase III construction is 150 calendar days, so that would put us out to about the end of January 2011, you know, certainly depending on the weather during that timeframe, but that's what we're looking at.
Early spring, ready to get.
Excuse me?
Early spring.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Gilly?
Dana, our experience with Kearl Construction is?
We have not had any experience personally using them as a construction company. I did talk to our design engineer, and they have checked their references. They received excellent references from five or six people that they didn't have done municipal projects with, and they are also on TDOT's pre-qualified list as a construction company.
Where are they based?
Out of Wartrace.
On that side of town.
Right.
Somewhat.
We usually didn't have a side of town, it was just town.
That may be why there's so much cheaper travel expenses are low.
That's right. All right, any other questions regarding this recommendation?
Move for approval? Second.
All right, motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you. On our second item, this deals with our closed-circuit television Traffic Signal Interconnection Project. Y'all may recall that a few weeks ago, we did approve the construction bid for this. We are now trying to get in place our required construction engineering inspection company and contract. We did receive proposals in April, and six proposals were submitted by several engineering companies, and we also had a consultant evaluation committee, as we're required to do through the TDOT projects that are issued under request for proposals. The committee openly selected Weiser Company as preferred firm, and we have been in negotiations with them for the contract, and that's resulted in the preparation of contract documents between Weiser Company for these services. And we'd recommend approval of the contract between the city and Weiser Company for these CEI services, an estimated cost of $154,722.52. I would remind you that this project is 100% federally funded through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
Could you briefly explain the project?
Sure. This is a project that we've been working on for some time. This is an upgrade of a system that was initially put in for our closed-circuit television system back in 1998. This was the pilot project for the first system in the state of Tennessee to be done. We've got a pretty good bit of time on the equipment and stuff that's out in the field, and you can imagine electronics and things over 12-year period in that harsh environment have pretty much used up their useful life. We're in the process of replacing the original ones and then adding an additional 11 new cameras, which will give us a total of 33. That accounts for a lot of the growth in the city since that point in time, where we've expanded out 231 North, 96, out toward Veterans Parkway, and so forth. This would also include the installation of some additional fiber optics, approximately eight and a half miles more of that to pick up the additional cameras, and also would pick up the interconnection of the traffic signals, the additional traffic signals along these routes, plus some of the existing traffic signals along the routes in Murfreesboro that were interconnected back to our traffic operations center back in mid-'80s with a hard-wired interconnect. This would also upgrade all the electronics and so forth in our traffic operations center. So it's, to a large degree, would be a new system. We've been well-served by the old system, but if you've watched Channel 3 lately and looked at the traffic cameras, you'll note that a bunch of those are out, and we're looking to make those replacements.
All right, any questions regarding this recommendation?
Again, Dana, this is 100% federally funded?
This is 100% federally funded, and I won't qualify that. That's 100% federally funded up to the $1 million right now, including the construction bid and the CEI services. We're about at $1 million and $3,000. We put in place a mechanism several months ago through our capital improvement budget to the MPO, to anything above and beyond the $1 million would be funded with another federal funding source, which is an 80/20 funding source. So as a backstop for going over a million, we're only obligated to pay for 20% of anything over a million.
Other questions?
May I move we approve the recommendations of our Transportation Director?
All right, you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
This time we'll consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding a request for approval to make application for matching grant funds to renovate Kids Castle Playground and surrounding family picnic areas at Old Fort Park, and to adopt a resolution authorizing an application for a local Parks and Recreation Fund grant from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to assist with the renovation of Kids Castle Playground and the surrounding family picnic areas at Old Fort Park, and committing matching funds in the amount of $200,000 if awarded this grant. Let me mention that we have a new person in a new position, although it's not a new person to our Parks and Recreation Department. For the last nine years, Angela Jackson has been with the city of Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department, and she has a tremendous background, university in Tennessee at Freed Hardman, and then evidently went off to the wilderness for a little while to Maine and Colorado and Alaska. So she has an extensive outdoor background and likes outdoor, so we're very pleased that she joined the city in 2001 as a program coordinator at the Wilderness Station in 2003. She was a program coordinator for our Greenway and Wetlands, and she created programs including the Small Fry Triathlon for preschoolers on the Greenway and the Greenway Arts Festival. 2005, she was the Middle Tennessee Environmental Administrator of the Year for the Tennessee Environmental Education Association, and was distinguished young professional in the Tennessee Recreation and Parks Association in 2008. So we're very pleased to have her take over our Assistant Parks and Recreation Director position, and we're glad that she's here tonight to present these recommendations. And I know Lanny is pleased to have you here, and especially to help us figure out how to spend some money that we think will enhance our community and make our Parks and Recreation Department even better for the city of Murfreesboro. Welcome, Angela.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here. I wanted to come before you tonight to ask for approval to apply for a grant and to designate matching grant funds for Kids Castle Playground and the surrounding family picnic areas at Old Fort Park. As most of you know, Kids Castle Playground was built by volunteer community efforts 15 years ago, and since that time has been extremely successful. There were a lot of people that, that put a lot of work into making that playground what it has been, and it's become what we've called a victim of its own success. It has really deteriorated over the years and become in need of total renovation, so that's what we are looking to do. And what I would like to ask is that we be able to renovate the playground with new features and elements that are safe, fun, age-appropriate, and accessible to all. And in addition, around the playground area, we wanted to accentuate the family picnic space with a small shelter and some designated picnic areas around that playground as a part of this fund. We want to use materials that'll be long-lasting and low-maintenance, allowing families to enjoy the space for generations to come. The grant is through the Tennessee Parks and, excuse me, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, as you mentioned before, and it is looking for, what we need is $200,000 in matching grant funds for a 50/50 match for a total of a $400,000 renovation project. And we need to pass a resolution, as a matter of record, it's 10R24 for that resolution. And to also request that the mayor be authorized to sign the documents necessary for the grant submission. Do you have any, any questions about the project?
Any questions for Ms. Jackson?
Mayor, I'd like to ask, what's the timeline on this? Will your grant be awarded in 90 days, 120 days?
We have not been given an award for, a deadline for the award at this time, I'm not sure. Hopefully soon.
Mr. Young, we've also included the funding for this city's match in the capital improvement plan that you'll be receiving later on this month. The legal department's been working with Parks and Recreation also on the bid documents for this, so that when, if and when we do get the grant, we'll be in a position to move quickly. So we know the playground needs some work, and we're trying to get ready for that with the grant.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Mr. Gilly?
If we chose to do, in other words, is the $200,000, is that what you have to apply for, or is there? What I'm getting at is I have a hard time spending a total of $400,000, given what our economy and the budget has been this year to renovate the playground. I just, I have a very hard time with, even if it's $200,000 that's in a capital improvement project, spending that on the heels of what we just finished spending renovating the sports com pool and that sort of thing, I just have a really hard time with that. If there's less that we can do and still apply for matching grant to scale this back, I would be willing to consider that, but I just can't go along with spending $200,000 right now, plus another $200,000 in grant money on the playground renovation.
Right, right, I understand where you're coming from. I think that what we have to look at, the existing playground and the playground as it was built 15 years ago, has so many different features. It encompasses 200,00, I'm sorry, 20,000 square feet of space, had a lot of different play elements. If there was a measurable term of play value, we'd like to have an equal experience there. And in order to build a space that has, that will be long-lasting, low-maintenance, and a lot of fun for our children, we want to make that investment now, and that's why we have asked for, for the amount that we have asked for. To answer your question directly, it is possible to apply for, for less money, yes.
I mean, we've just finished a budget where we've asked our city employees to bear with us and wait until February or so to see how revenues are before we look at raises and that sort of thing, and now we're looking at spending this kind of money on a playground at a time of the year when the kids are getting back in school and the peak season for it is, is past. And I just wonder if it's something that we can put off doing until the economy's better.
This particular grant application has been given, will be given priority points for playground renovation. If the city were to spend $200,000 now, and we're going, we're going to have to do something in order to, to keep this playground open to the public, we don't know that there's going to be another grant and a chance for the city to spend 200 and for us to get a $400,000 project.
Well, one of the things I think that we should be mindful of is 15 years ago, that it was a volunteer effort that put it together. The city gave the property, obviously, and has maintained and taken care of it, and we've gotten a good lifespan out of it. I sympathize with the consideration of not spending money, but where would we have been 15 years ago had we not built it? And it was a volunteer thing, that we actually got quite a significant return over the 15 years, even though the city didn't put anything into it but land and the maintenance and upkeep of it. As I drive by going to the golf course, and I'll admit, I'm trying to keep the taxpayer expense at the golf course down by playing as many rounds of golf at Old Fort Golf Course as I can. It is one of the most utilized features at Old Fort Park consistently, other than, I think, maybe the tennis courts currently, which again was a new expenditure, which we didn't have to go into, and certainly that we did. I think it's a tremendous benefit, you know, when you look at, at an expenditure for something like this that you get a tremendous value for, you get a tremendous use for, you have next door to it, you have a pavilion and a recreation area with facilities that are already there, I think it only enhances what we already have. One of the ways you keep attracting people to come to Murfreesboro and make investments is to have things that nobody else has. This has really been a, a good thing. I understand your point, Mr. Gilly. I really feel like we've benefited, though, for the last 15 years of having this facility. Vice Mayor?
You know, I've gotten, I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Gilly, and I've received several phone calls early in the spring, and I think I passed them on to Mr. Goodman about the condition of the Kids Castle. It was, of course, it's a wooden structure that was built by volunteers many years ago, had a lot of missing boards, missing screws coming up. It's in need of a lot of repair. Through the years, the weather and the use it's gotten, we're going to have to do something. It's kind of like this, it's kind of like the swimming pool, you either got to fix it or tear it down, or just close it. I mean, it's, it's in need of a lot of repair. You know, and you're getting it at 50%, I know it's all, it's all our money, it's all taxpayers' money, but we're getting a grant on this, and it, and this is, I know we look at, you know, what we did for our budget, this is not, this is, this is bond money, this is not, it's different than looking at reoccurring expenses, as you would give raises for reoccurring expenses. You wouldn't do that with bond money. I think we all agree on that. But I think we have an opportunity to do this with this $200,000 grant. I'd hate to see us miss that opportunity, and maybe next year, when, if the economy got better, we'll have to spend the entire $400,000 or whatever to do it ourselves. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree with you, but we're in a, we're somewhere in here where we got to do something.
Ms. Harris?
You know, with the economy like it is today, which is really down, the government, I think I read somewhere where they were predicting $1.1 million down for next year, possibly even more. And I think the concept of the Kids Castle is fabulous. In fact, when they were building it, I hit a couple of nails myself.
Did you?
And the community really came together. Right now, with the weather like it is, and in our general fund, we're talking about possibly taking this out of, we don't know the unforeseen things, like, for instance, I think I heard last night where the hospital air conditioner was out, lightning hit that, so a lot of unforeseen things. We have schools where we're running, I'm sure the AC is hard as we can run, we have other city offices, and we still have employees that are, five employees that are unemployed with the city. I would like one of two things. I would either like to see us hold off right now on this until February, when we can see where our tax revenue is, or either reduce this amount. I understand the fact that we are getting a grant, but like, maybe like this grant came around, another grant will come around, and I understand the need for it, but with the economy and everything, I just would like to see us hold off. Not saying not do it, but hold off.
If I could give you maybe one, one quick observation. The deadline that's before us right now is on August 13th, deadline to turn in the grant. We'll have to wait to see if we get selected to be awarded a grant. If we're awarded the grant, then we're going to need to bid the project out and come right back before the mayor and council to say, you know, ask for your approval on a construction project. So there is still another opportunity for you to take a look at the project. Ms. Harris, one of the things we've seen with the downturn in the economy is, is that more. And we see this as certainly an asset and something that's contributed to the community for a long time. But there will be another opportunity for you all to see it before the project ever gets funded. Right now, it's a request for a grant application.
I think that's a good point you brought out. A lot of people, you know, can't afford to go on vacation. A lot of people are staying home. I think, what are the numbers for the new pool? I mean, we were talking about that earlier.
I believe it was 36,000 participants in the first six weeks?
First month.
First month, 36,000 participants.
That's amazing.
Well, and frankly, Kid Castle is in such a bad shape that a lot of people are not going there because it is -- I'm not going to say it's just rough.
Oh, I'm not saying I'm against it. I was just saying if we can see if we can maybe repair the bare necessities right now with the economy like it is, that's what I'm saying. I'm not -- my son used to go there, so, you know, it's a great facility. And like I said, I hit a bunch of nails there. But I was just saying with the economy like it is.
Sure. If I could, one of the things that we've really been working on in our department over the past couple of years especially, is really looking at our strategic action plans and looking for community input. And playgrounds is one of the things that was always at the top of the list. One of the things that when people ask where our priorities should be in Parks and Recreation, it was playgrounds. And I think that for Kids Castle, it has seen hundreds of thousands of kids come since you've hit those nails and since many other people put that together. Our maintenance department, I'll be honest, they've struggled for a while now making those repairs as we've had to remove elements. You know, say if there were 30 elements in there before, there might only be 12 to 15 now because as they've become where they were becoming more and more unsafe, we've had to take them out, board over the place where there used to be something fun. That area is honestly getting to the point where if we don't do something that includes a total renovation, we won't be able to patch it any longer safely and without causing a liability.
If we apply for the grant in the meantime, if we get the grant, can we always say later, you know, two weeks from now that, hey, we've decided not to do it. We don't want the grant, thank you, and we'll just do it later? Is that an option, Mr. Lyons? Can we do that? I mean, I don't want to --
Once we commit, we committed. That's what I want to know. Once we commit, we committed.
Let me let Mr. Goodman answer that one.
Good evening, council. The way the grants generally were run is you submit a grant and based on the number of grants that are submitted. For example, they may have $3 million to award and they may have $10 million of requests. Every legislator would like to get a piece of that grant in their particular area, obviously. And there's going to be some posturing and maneuvering, I guess, to get money in particular areas. And sometimes what I've seen them do is come back and say that, we know that you applied for $200,000, but what we've done to spread the wealth, so to speak, is we're making the maximum grant $300,000. So do you still want to have the grant awarded basically half of what that would be, $150, or does that kill the project? And it's up to the city to make that decision. Obviously, if they give a full award and Murfreesboro, you know, would like to withdraw that, they could do that before the contract is signed. What they do is they go through the point awards, they look at the grants, and those grantees are notified. Before the city is obligated to that grant, there is a contract between the Department of Environment and Conservation, State of Tennessee, and the City of Murfreesboro. Generally speaking, it takes about three months for those grants to process, which means that from this point, it would probably be October, November or so before that grant was awarded to the city. Using Mr. Lyons' explanation about bidding the project, then what we would do is, let's say that the grant was awarded in October, November. Obviously, it's going to take us about six to eight weeks, maybe 12, to even get plans together to build. And then we're looking at probably somewhere around a two-to-three-month period for building. What that does is that puts us in mid-to-late spring for the opening of that playground at that point.
Question, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Young.
What's the expected life expectancy of this new park as proposed with the modern safety equipment on it? Is it 15 years?
Mr. Young, generally, playground equipment will -- manufactured playground equipment will last anywhere from 20 to 30 years. Generally, what happens is they go out of compliance. With the playground that we have now, it was a self-built. Hammered nails, Ms. Gales mentioned that she went out there and drove a few nails. Those types of playgrounds age a lot quicker. Generally, the age of that playground's around 10 years. And what happens is you start losing pieces out of compliance in the first five years because it is a man-made structure instead of a manufactured structure. You can't do the modification to that structure like you could a manufactured structure. With a manufactured structure, you can call the manufacturer and say, we need a compliance update. They will send you a retrofit kit. It may be the slide's two inches taller. It may mean that it needs a bigger platform for the children to start before they go down the slide, those kind of things. But with this one, the difficulty that we've had, not only with maintenance, because maintenance has been probably four to five times that of a regular playground, is the fact that once something breaks or once something has to be retrofitted, we can't do that because of the structure.
That component has to be taken out of it.
That has to be taken out. And that's what Ms. Jackson was referring to, is the fact that what we started was a grand, grandiose playground, and it was wonderful. It brought the community together. Gosh, you know, I was out there all week long, and it was a great effort. But the reverse side of that is, it was very maintenance-heavy in the fact that things went out of compliance pretty early in the life of that playground. And now we're probably five years past the life of the playground, and it's still a popular slide. And Mr. Bratcher mentioned the fact that we get numerous phone calls all the time about Kids Castle, you know, why is this broken? Why, you know, I put money into it. I went out there and put sweat equity into it. We want to bring that back to the community, and we just think it's a worthwhile project at this point.
Other questions?
And with this funding, are we enlarging things, adding things, or just repairing things?
We would be more replacing things, Ms. Gales. And of course, we would try to make it as equal to what Ms. Jackson said, an equal play value. And what you have to do is you have to look at the elements that are out there. There's play elements for two through five, and then there's elements that are five through 12. And so you have to look at equal value within those. Some of the first things that came out was some of the swings, and that's some of the things that kids really liked the most. But, you know, it's just a sad fact that that's what we had to do.
So what we are asking for tonight is permission to meet the deadline for tomorrow.
That's correct.
To apply for this grant. Not necessarily are we going to do all these repairs, use all the money and match.
We think if we do the repairs that are necessary, we would use the money. But there's, like I said, you know, it is an application point at this process.
And?
The deadline's tomorrow.
Right. I understand that.
We've got the grant prepared. We have worked on that. And if the council does approve this tonight, then we will submit that grant tomorrow. The mayor would have to sign several things in there. One of the things that is a commitment that they're looking for, financial commitment from the city, is the resolution or an ordinance, which says to the Department of Environment and Conservation that if awarded, then the city would be willing to put the money up for that project.
Kind of like building a road, especially like Medical Center Parkway. The state wasn't going to build the Medical Center Parkway interchange on I-24 to the Old Manson Pike, even though the city said we were going to have Medical Center Parkway there. They didn't agree to build it until we had that road on the ground ready to go where they can build their interchange to that road. They're going to want a commitment from us.
I'd like to see us, if there's some way we could just go ahead and get this, apply for this grant. You're looking at $200,000 over 30-year lifespan. That's a little over $6,000 a year investment.
And you've had a free -- it's not going to be as nice as this one. For the last 15 years, it didn't cost you anything except you keep taking part of it out of service.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things I failed to mention, we went back and we looked at some of the old records. The estimated cost of Kids Castle in 1995 was $176,000.
So here's 15 years later, you're going to try to not improve and replace.
And again, remember, it had the picnic areas and those kind of things around it when it was built.
What is our track record when we usually apply for grants?
It's generally good. We just received an $80,000 RTP grant for the renovation of the Greenlight, which was an 80 percent grant.
Can you get, if we approve this tonight, or next week, can you have some pictures of the present? And that'd give us opportunity to go out and look at it ourselves or have some -- I mean, it's in bad shape.
Let me say this, too. It's really important for us as a department to involve the community back into this project. I've talked to the past co-chairs, Ms. Dean and Mr. Beckwith, and they're willing to come back, and we'd like to get a committee together again to look back into what we need to do to bring this back to the community. We want this to make a -- be a work in progress, so to speak, and we want to involve the community back into the process. There may be efforts at that point that the community could go back out and raise some additional funds. And if those funds could be raised, those could be used as our matching funds for the grant. So there may be an opportunity for that. There's a three-year commitment, and we've got to spend that grant within three years. Obviously, we'd like to have the playground ready for the next spring of 2011. But there's nothing that says that we can't engage the public and come back to the council with a proposal to see what we need to do. But we would have that money in place to do that work with if we needed to.
On a scale from one to 10, how safe would you say it is right now, with 10 being the safest?
It's safe, Ms. Harris. It's not pleasurable as it used to be, but it is safe.
Yes, ma'am.
And have elements that you can't use anymore, and they've been taken out if they were unsafe.
Ms. Gales, one of the things from a risk management standpoint, I have to tell you, is we go out there pretty much on a daily basis, make an evaluation of different things and do what we have to do to make that playground safe. Now, does that mean that it doesn't take a lot more maintenance? It does take a lot more maintenance. But what you're doing is you're eventually ending up with just a shale. I mean, there's nothing.
Nothing to play with.
There's nothing to play on, really, is what you're -- you're going into an area that you can't go up the steps anymore, you can't do certain things, and it's becoming not a playground.
Yeah. And here again, I'm not against the Kids Castle.
Correct.
I'm just looking at the economy and how many people out of work and the money we're talking about spending right now. And that's why I was asking about the grants. I'm not that.
And to go along, excuse me, but to go along with what you were saying, come back and look in February, that will be about the time, somewhere around there, I would think, that we'll be shoring up some of the plans and so forth and maybe coming back to the council at that point to get a commitment for construction and so forth at that point.
That's why I was asking, applying for the grant, and if we get the grant, if we could scale back.
We could. If that's the wishes of the council, we could do that. We'll have to burn a little midnight oil and get the legal department to redraft the resolution because it has to be a part of the grant.
I mean, applying for the grant is just filling out the application, but as far as what the city, what we are willing to spend or what we can spend economically feasible to spend right now, we can scale back. That was my question. Not necessarily we're going to do that, you know, we can possibly scale back, but as far as getting permission to apply for the grant is what you're asking for tonight. Is that correct?
And it has to have an amount in there.
Right.
With the resolution.
Right.
I think getting back to what you mentioned earlier and what Ms. Harris may be getting at, is that if we apply for the 200-200 match in this situation, we're approved for the 200-200 match, we still have an opportunity at that point to say, wait a minute, we can't accept all of what you've offered because we don't think we can afford the full match we put up.
When the contract comes in, Mr. Gilli, that will be the point.
There's still another opportunity to look at that and say, you've offered us this much, but looking at this right now, we just cannot make the match.
And I would anticipate the contract, like I said, October, November, I would think.
And there's probably, like you're saying, there is the opportunity or maybe even the likelihood, depending on how much money they have to allocate and how many applications are made, they may come back and say that the most you can get is 100, 150, which means our match has automatically been reduced to 100 or 150 at that point.
That's correct. And we've seen that before, especially in economic times like this.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Young.
I think we've had some good discussion tonight. We've learned a lot about Kids Castle and its timeframe and useful life and how important it is to the community. I think we need to let the Recreation Department apply for this grant. With that, I'll move for approval.
May I ask one question?
Second.
Let's just, okay, we have a motion to second. Thank you.
Okay. With the understanding that if approved, we still can go and look at what kind of work we're going to do and how much money we're going to spend.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to walk you through that process.
But.
Oh, I understand. I just want.
I don't think we want to make an application if we don't think we're going to go ahead and go through with it. Honest, I don't know whether they pay attention to Channel 3 like many of our people do and watch what we do, but I think it's disingenuous to apply for a grant and say that we'll worry about this later on at some other time. The council, I think, ought to go on record and say that we're going to commit this money now or we're not going to go ahead with the grant. And that would be my suggestion to you. I'm certainly open to that. I did not hear that in Mr. Young's motion, and if he'd like to change his motion, I understand that. But I would, I thought your motion was, we apply for the grant with the understanding that we're going to match this if we receive the grant.
That's exactly right. I see no reason to amend my motion because that's what my intent was.
Greg, I thought the motion was actually to approve the resolution. If we're talking about having a motion separate from approval of the resolution, we need to make that clear.
Well, we have a request for approval to make the application for a grant. That's number one, is what I thought we were going to do.
That's what's in the resolution.
Okay. So all we're voting to do is to adopt a resolution, authorize an application. Is that right?
Yes.
And committing matching funds in the amount of $200,000 if awarded the grant. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Sections one and two of the resolution.
And that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
And is that your section?
Absolutely, yep.
So there wouldn't be any going back? I mean, I don't, I mean.
Well, then I can't vote for it if it's not with the understanding we're having another opportunity to look at this before we spend it. That's one thing. But if we're saying, this is the end, I'll be all you give us $200,000, we're locked and loaded.
Well, if it comes in, like you mentioned earlier, if it comes in at 100 or 150, we're lowered anyway.
But that's the grant provider doing that, not us taking that opportunity, depending on what our economic circumstances are at the time.
Correct.
Ms. McAdams, I see a squint, a frown.
Well, Mr. Goodman has certainly more. Well, Mr. Goodwin has certainly more experience directly with the grant givers, but in the grant applications I've looked at, it always says you can't spend more. I've never heard the state say, we won't take it back. The requirement is that we spend as much as they spend. And if the council, in looking at the submittal from the Recreation Department, decides the scale of the project should be such that the bids come back, that it is less than that amount, I think we would be, we just have to commit, we're going to spend equally. The expectation is it will be at this scale of project, but I don't think we will be in trouble with the state if we give the money back.
So we could scale back?
Yeah.
If the size of the project didn't meet the size of what their grant was, that we could do whatever we wanted to at that point?
So what?
Less than, less than.
So what I was saying is correct, being my understanding. Is that correct?
The process is such that before the contract is, the grant contract is signed with the state, and before the construction contract is signed with the bidder, it will come back to the council.
That's correct.
At both of those stages, it will come back to the council, and you could decide, no, we thought about it, we're not going to take the grant at all. At that point, we might have lost the ability to reduce the scale of the grant, if there was a problem with the state having already given out the grants. But similarly, if you decide, after getting more detailed information about what Kids Castle was, and what you want it to be, and what the estimated cost of getting what you want it to be is less than a $400,000 project, you could still do that. Another possibility that we often do with construction projects, may or may not be appropriate for this one, is to say, this is what the base is, and if, depending on how the bids come in, we'll want this ad alternate. And if they come in really good, we're going to want that ad alternate.
So you could start at a low number and see other additions if you decide to take them. And any of them, you could do that.
You know, but the commitment is that we will match the state's commitment, and that it will not exceed this amount.
Right.
The state's commitment won't exceed the amount of grants.
What you're going to match is common practice. That's what we do all the time.
Yes, we do that with numerous grants. Yes, sir.
As long as those opportunities are going to be there, then that's fine. But I don't like looking at it from the attitude, as we're locked, loaded, and here's $200,000, regardless of what happens, it's going to get spent.
Well, we're looking, I think, and I'm not putting words in the mayor's mouth, but we're looking at, focusing on this night, that's the only way we can vote on it, because we don't have a contract.
We don't have a grant, either. We can decide whatever we want to build based on whatever we want to do at the time.
So adjustments can be made at a later date?
If the council wants to, yes.
We're just applying for the grant. Okay. I understand. Just want to get a good understanding.
All right, you have a motion. Second, any other questions or comments regarding the resolution? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, we'll thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and this time we'll consider recommendations of the Community Development Director with regards to Neighborhood Stabilization Program Purchase 510 Point, I'm sorry, a program purchase at 510 Point Clear Drive in Smyrna, Tennessee.
I didn't nail nails. I sawed things like that. Hundreds of things like that.
Hundreds of things.
Hundreds, it seemed like.
And I'm sure those are the things that still remain out there in use.
One can only hope, Mr. Mayor.
None of that was lost, or has been lost, over the years. You did put your initials in all of them. Did you burn them with it?
I sawed them well.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. In July of 2009, the city signed an agreement with Tennessee Housing Development Agency to administer a $1.27 million neighborhood stabilization grant on behalf of the Murfreesboro-Rutherford County Continuum of Care. The grant, which was submitted by the continuum, calls for creating permanent rental housing by purchasing, rehabbing, and transferring ownership of vacant foreclosed, single-family residents to approved nonprofits. The agencies are required, then, to rent these properties to income-eligible persons. On August 6, 2010, the Community Development Department submitted to Fannie Mae an offer for 510 Point Clear Drive in Smyrna. For $165,000 plus closing costs using NSP funds, our offer is contingent upon your approval, and I recommend approving the purchase and authorizing the city manager to purchase, sign the purchase contract and closing documents. When rehab is complete, we propose to transfer the property to the Charter Group, which is a nonprofit which operates in Smyrna. We also expect this to be the very last project on this grant.
All right. Sounds like an additional duty that Mr. Calo has undertaken on behalf of the residents of not only the city, but the county. So are there any questions regarding this recommendation?
No questions, Mayor. I move we approve the recommendation. Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Tonight, we're asking you to consider in a contract with the Cheryl Morgan Firm, a health consulting business out of Covington, Kentucky. One of the most desirable things about working for the city is the benefit package that we offer to our employees. It is also one of the most expensive components of operating the city government. We're projecting for next budget year, the current budget year, something in excess of $10 million for the employee health plan alone. As we went through the budget in great detail this year, it became obvious that the health plan was one place, that we had to focus some additional efforts in order to control costs, not necessarily to reduce costs, but to control them for the future. We've looked around in the marketplace and believe the firm of Cheryl Morgan and Associates is the right firm to assist us in preparing a long-range plan for future adjustments to our benefits. We're not proposing cuts to the employees' benefit plan at this point in time. We believe there are ways we can procure it more efficiently. We believe there are changes in the marketplace that we can take advantage of that will reduce their costs and our costs. It is still an 80/20 sharing arrangement with the city picking up 80% of those costs, the employee picking up 20%. Mr. Morgan's firm has agreed to come to work for the city on a three-year basis for a flat fee of $33,000 a year. Any income derived from working on the city's business would be returned to the city. The $33,000 is the only compensation from Mr. Morgan's firm. I would point you in the contract to a small change in paragraph 16. In that paragraph, we had said, "For any reason, should the city have had to pursue a legal action with the firm, that they would compensate the city for our legal costs." They asked that we insert the word "reasonable fees" in there, and we have done that. That is a change to the contract since your packets went out earlier this week. We recommend your approval. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
So it shall pay all expenses, it shall pay reasonable...
All reasonable expenses.
All reasonable.
Is that from the attorney's point of view, or the...
On behalf of mine and Ms. McGann's profession, I'm insulted that they would even feel that's necessary to caveat known.
Let the minutes reflect that in parentheses, please. All right, you have this recommendation.
That may narrow it down to no money.
Yes.
And this was already a budget, it was in a budget that we passed anyway, right?
This is a budgeted item.
Is there a motion?
Mayor hearing, no questions. I move for approval. Second.
You have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, the council should consider the appointment of a city treasurer. As you are aware, there are five positions which are filled by the city council directly, those being the city manager, the city treasurer, the city recorder, the attorney, and the city judge. This is a kind of a change that we have anticipated and asked the legislature to allow us, if possible, to allow the same person to occupy these two positions, the city recorder and the city treasurer. You have before you a little bit of an explanation from the city manager that I think fairly well states the ability to appoint the same person to two of these positions, and if you are interested in doing that tonight, I would make that recommendation to you that we appoint Melissa Wright, who is the city recorder, and ask her to fill the position of city treasurer at the same time. We have traditionally had the city's personnel director occupy this treasurer role because of some revenues that come into the city through the hotel motel tax, some separation there, but I believe with her record and the record of our finance department that it is logical to ask her to take on this additional title, and I make that recommendation to you.
So move.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Evidently, Ms. Wright has been out campaigning during the...
Just begging for more work. She looks very excited about it.
To do, certainly.
She sees great ads, too.
Very commendable, Ms. Wright.
Some of the best yard signs I've seen.
TV was outstanding.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright, our new city treasurer.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. I'm assuming you will assume this title immediately.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
Hey, Rob, give us some technology upgrades, by the way.
Thank you, council members. At this time, council is to schedule a date and to discuss a proposed 2010-2014 capital improvement plan, and also, I'd like to add at this time, to set perhaps a public hearing on a liquor license that Ms. Wright wants to bring to us tonight at this time. So if you'd talk to us, Ms. Wright, about the capital improvement plan.
Well, I'll tackle the capital improvement plan. She may speak about the liquor license. Staff has been working hard on the capital improvement plan. We traditionally have done that in a workshop with you. We'd like to propose the date of August the 25th at 4:00 p.m. in room 218.
All right, council members?
What date?
25th, 4:00 p.m., room 218.
Yep.
Is there a motion? Set that.
So move.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Now, Ms. Wright, if you want to talk to us about this liquor license that we need to work on.
Mayor, we need to set a public hearing for Memorial Liquor and Wine, which is the new location at 3411 Memorial Boulevard. It's at the new Publix Shopping Center out on Memorial, and he's trying, the applicant's trying to meet the one and only meeting in September from ABC, and that's the only date I can come up with that will meet our advertising requirements and get his work to ABC in time. Otherwise, he would have to wait till October, and that would be a Wednesday at 4:00. We're already going to be meeting that day. It's just a day and time we don't ordinarily have these.
So it would be setting the same date as the hearing that we just, or the public hearing that we just, or the date to discuss the CIP?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there a motion that we set this public hearing and advertise it at the same time as our capital improvement plan meeting?
So move. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, we'll hear from the Assistant City Attorney with regards to Three Rivers of Rutherford County LLC interim repair agreement with the Travelers Insurance Company. Mr. Ives, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of council. Back in July of 2008, the city called performance bonds that had been posted by Three Rivers of Rutherford. There was approximately a million dollars total of bonds that were called at that time over water and sewer work, actually not water, it was sewer work, street work, and storm drainage work for the three big sections of Three Rivers, Sections 1, 2, and 3. Work that, as I said, we've had substantial road failures out there in the area, the primary one being Casey Lane that was constructed as part of this project along with the sewer work and the storm drainage work. Since that time, we've been in negotiations both with the Three Rivers Principals, their general contractor, and also Travelers, who's the bonding company for Three Rivers. And a year later, in July of 2009, Three Rivers entered into bankruptcy to avoid the bank foreclosing on the vast majority of their property out there. Late in 2009, Mr. Griffith, city engineer, and I advised Travelers that some work needed to be done on Casey Lane in order to prevent what we saw as a likelihood of additional road damage during the winter wet season, and we were concerned that we were actually getting close to having to close Casey Lane in some sections and reroute traffic. Travelers declined to undertake that work, and so the city had the work performed through its annual paving, or its annual construction contractor. After the work was completed, we sent invoices to Travelers for 150% of the amount of the work that, of the amount invoiced to us by the contractor. That was pursuant to a term in the development contracts that Three Rivers had signed that we believed allowed us to collect that at 150%. After some further negotiations, Travelers didn't feel that they were obligated to pay it at the 150% rate, and some more negotiations, they agreed that they would pay it at 125% if we would make a final settlement as to these costs. And so that agreement is attached to this tonight. We're asking for your approval. We are settling only the payment of these invoices. These invoices totaled about $170,000, and so the payment from Travelers will be just a little over $200,000. According, our belief is that there is still approximately $800,000 worth of performance bonds in place because of the fact that there were discussions at, immediately prior to us calling the bonds, there were discussions about reducing the amounts of two of the bonds. So there is a dispute as to whether there's $800,000 left or approximately $600,000 left. In any event, there's a substantial amount left, and we are continuing to work with Travelers. They have actually asked us to get them cost, or not cost, but to get them construction details for the repairs that are necessary, and then for a final surface coat of asphalt to be put over that part of Casey Lane that's in Section 1. And that's the area of Casey Lane that's being traveled most heavily with the increasing occupancy at the Assisted Living Center that recently opened there on, just off of Casey Lane, and they are also continuing to build and sell some of the condos. I think it's Stone Bridge at Three Rivers is the condo area there. So as that traffic is increasing, they're having some problems there on that section of road, and it's important to get that done. If Travelers does not elect to do the work themselves, we will most likely be proceeding with that work and then claiming under the remaining bond on that section. So with all that, we would ask your approval of this interim agreement. Again, it will settle the three invoices that we have sent to Travelers, but everything else will stay open.
Any questions from Mr. Ives regarding this agreement? If not, is there a motion that we accept this agreement?
So move.
Have a motion and second. Any questions? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, and I want to just point out that our legal department, I know many people possibly do come in contact with the legal department for any number of reasons, but our legal department has a number of different issues that they face, and certainly in protecting the taxpayers' interests and public safety is one of them, and I want to thank Ms. McGann and her staff, Mr. Ives, for the work that they do each and every day. It's very difficult to comprehend the types of issues that come to the legal department, but they do an outstanding job, and I certainly do appreciate their efforts in this regard, and especially in this recommendation and agreement that you've brought forward tonight.
That was a direct savings to taxpayers.
Exactly right.
Excellent job.
Something that somebody agreed to do, and then somebody didn't have an opportunity, and it saves the taxpayers from having to pick up a liability. So our city staff for many years has, I've often been criticized for making it so difficult for people to do business in certain areas, but in many instances, they've worked to protect the taxpayers' interests in having facilities and infrastructure in place without it being at the city's expense. So my appreciation to both of you and your staffs.
Very much.
All right, beer permit applications. Ms. Wright, the city treasurer and city recorder.
Mayor, we have a few tonight. We have a convenience store at 2898 South Church Street, Suite C. We have a restaurant at 123 Southeast Broad Street. Those have both met all of our requirements. We have two special events, one by the MTSU Alumni Foundation at 1124 Rucker Lane, and another being done by a local restaurant at the Bumpus Harley-Davidson, 2250 Northwest Broad Street. The MTSU event has met our requirements. The one at Bumpus Harley-Davidson has met everything but the final inspections. They won't set up until tomorrow morning, so they won't be able to do that, and the event is tomorrow night. And they'll do that tomorrow after they're called.
All right, since all of these meet the requirements, except for the one regarding the final inspection, is there a motion that we accept these beer permit applications?
So move. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have before you the list of statements to be considered for payment, and I believe the city manager has a recommendation from the fire department that he'd like to make in addition to what is on this list, or maybe in addition to what is already there. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Bragg. You'll notice there are two items on your revised list of bills that deal with CO oximeters and automatic external defibrillators. This spring, the fire department received a grant to fund the AEDs and the CO oximeters for the fire department. That grant was awarded. The city budgeted the matching portion of that grant in the annual budget. However, the actual award of that contract has not yet taken place. So the recommendation to you this evening is to accept the contract and award the bid for those two items. The list of bills would actually pay for those items. This was a grant that paid for almost half of this equipment, the city providing the balance of the funding for it.
All right, you have this recommendation to accept the contract and award the bid for these items for the fire department. Is there any questions for Mr. Lyons regarding this recommendation?
So move. Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. So now you have before you the revised list of statements to be paid. Is there a motion that we pay the bills?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. I have no board and commission appointments to make this evening. Is there other business from the staff or from council to come before the council at this time? I would like to mention to you that each fall, September and October, we, in the last eight years, that we have done a city manager performance evaluation. It is, comes time again to plan that evaluation for this year and to review Mr. Lyons' performance as a city manager. We did do him on a kind of an interim basis the last September and October when we talked and had a public performance evaluation. I'd like to recommend to you that we do that again. I will send you out a form, which is the same form that we have used for the last eight years to see if that's the same type of evaluation you'd like to go through this year. What we've done primarily is send that form out, have you fill it out, have you rate the city manager on a numerical scale, make whatever comments based on the 14 areas of evaluation that we look at. Then we compile that, furnish it to the council, give you a week to look at it, and then we have a public meeting to discuss the evaluation in room 218.
You say, "Rate him or rate him?"
No, well, it is your choice. You may rate or rate. You may provide your own rate, or you may rate him. So I intend to do that again, so I'm just giving you the notice that we'll go through